In the flag slip, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Free discussion of possible action to approve or not approve revisions for policy BH sexual harassment need be admission residency placement transfer and withdrawal. Presented by our school attorney and I'm sorry I didn't get your name.
Justin Clyburn. Hi, I'm Justin Clyburn, Andy Fugit couldn't be here today. He has a more troublesome school to deal with tonight. So.
Not that ours is less troublesome, it's just that.
Well fed.
Yeah, yeah.
So the sexual harassment policy is only being changed to include different titles and names. So you can see, you know, the definitions, A, we've added the chief operations officers designated as the appeal officer. And throughout, that's all it does is it either changes or updates names and titles in each section. There's no substantive changes and nothing procedurally will change other than the names and titles of those in the process.
So we went, just quickly, we, the administrators and I went through a training with Andy Fugit. And he told us, I think you need to do this, you need to do this, you need to do, so he kind of assigned, I mean, we talked about it, we could have done whatever. But he got us all set up and did the training, so we are, we are in compliance and ready to go with this new Title IX law. That's been on the books for a while now. It's not as new as.
Well, as soon as you start knowing it, they'll change it again.
That's right, that's right.
That second policy, there are going to be some substantive changes and that is for admission residency placement transfer and withdrawal. But notably, the changes will be regarding transfers. And the first major one is, once a student is accepted as a transfer, that transfer essentially is good for the following year. Unless the school district actively does something to revoke that. They don't have to reapply at the end of the year. It's just assumed that they will be back unless for some reason the school district decides it's in the best interest that they not come back.
So that's the way it was in the old law. The new law didn't specify, and so we had lots of questions. Do we have to make them? We didn't want them to have to apply every year. That's just a lot of work and so they cleaned it up and, and so this is, this is a good thing for all of us. Thank you.
So there's, you know, there's some, a little bit of language in there about what a transfer can be denied for. It's not, it's not anything that is too substantive, really, that does give the school districts a lot of leeway. You know, there has to be, but there has to be a reason why you are not allowing a student to transfer or remain. Now, there's two other, two other changes that are the result of new legislation. And one is that if a student is here as a transfer student, any sibling of that student can be transferred regardless of capacity. And the same is true for the children of employees. So that's something that regardless of capacity, if they want to be here, they can be here.
So that's a little different than before. We didn't have, that wasn't in the law and we had parents from Bethany. And Dr. Bellows was one that, that kind of championed this, that said, we need to have that sibling clause in there. We also wanted to have, not just, in the past, it was, was just a certified staff member. Now it's a cert, an employee. So that's good. That for, for a school like Bethany that people want in, we can get people to come to work here. TAs and things because we can allow them to come in and, and the bonus for us is that it's above the, it can be, doesn't have to be. But, but if we're already at our capacity limit and we hire somebody late, we can bring their child. We don't have to say, well, we'll try next year. So that's a good thing.
And so those, those two changes that result in new legislation that I think we all agree is, is pretty common sense and beneficial for everyone. That's really the extent of the changes to the transfer policy. You'll, you can see, you know, the, what's been removed and what's added, but the gist of it is what I've just laid out for you. There really shouldn't be anything else and I think it's going to streamline things quite a bit for y'all here at the administration building.
Let me clarify something on page fourteen. It says, in addition, any student who's attended school as a resident student for at least three years prior to moving out of the district may be allowed to transfer regardless of capacity?
Yeah, I apologize. That's another one that's a, that's a result of new legislation. So if a student had been here for three years and.
As a resident living in the district and then they move out, they get basically to.
That's right. So.
They get to retain on a transfer basis.
That's right. That's a good thing. We've got, maybe a parent moves out their junior year, kid's been here pre-K through eleven or ten. And they move out and great kid, but if the parent moved out for whatever reason, you know, it could be a million reasons. Splitting the house or they just sell their house to get an opportunity. We couldn't keep that kid before. This law says we can keep that kid so that kid can graduate. It says may, not shall, which is also key. So we don't have to bring them back if.
If they don't meet the criteria, but they would be on a transfer basis then.
They would be on a transfer.
Subject to attendance and behavior and all of that.
That's right.
Right. For all of these, the school still does have that discretion with attendance and discipline.
But this one also has the may. What did that, instead of?
May is.
Does that make it so that it's our discretion?
That's right. May instead of shall. Shall, we would have to do it. May says we can if we, it's our choice.
That's a.
It's all, it's all, we feel a lot better about it.
That's pretty advantageous though.
Yeah.
As a homeowner, that means you pop in for three years and you're.
They don't.
That doesn't say, that doesn't say that we'll do it, right?
Well.
It doesn't say that, that we have to. We're not gonna, if, if people were to just start playing that three-year game, we certainly wouldn't, wouldn't want to support that, right?
But understanding that is a possibility.
Yeah.
Well, it fixes like you said, through eleventh grade, you want to get them graduated. That one has been a problem in the past, but.
I, I spent, Mark and I spent hours with a lady this year that absolutely broke my heart that we couldn't help her. They were only here two years. This, this hadn't even passed yet. And I said, I, I think the law is gonna, I really believe the law is gonna change. But the issue is, she was two, needed three. The law said three. So, you know, we will always follow the letter of the law with respect to this. You, you don't want to get into that.
Yeah, I wasn't, I wasn't aware of that, so I'm glad whenever.
One other thing that you guys, that's a little change and I checked with Andy before, I, I came up just to double check to make sure it's aligned to you. This is true. The board doesn't approve transfers anymore. You, you do, you take appeals. So that, where, you're, you're basically setting, well, you are setting, when you do this capacity like we do tonight, then we just take them in rank order. With, if Mark has two spots in eleventh grade, he goes to eleventh grade to the top person and he looks at discipline, attendance and behavior. And if, if they make that, that's the person that comes in regardless, so on and so forth. So then all these other people that don't get in for any reason, could be, you know, capacity, but it could be behavior or whatever. They have the right to appeal to you guys. So, and, and if we, we'll do our very best to kind of coach them through why, why what happened, happened and why they didn't. But some will get to you probably and if you do, you'll just listen to it and make a decision like you would on anything else.
Drew, what's the next date for transfers to apply and be accepted?
So the, the, it's quarterly, so the next one is July first. That's why we're doing it now. It's actually June fifteenth, June twentieth, I'm sorry. June twentieth and so we're doing this one now. That's ahead of our next vote. And then they will look at those and will.
July, October, January.
Yeah.
And that's all that we have to do. Our tab on the website and it has all the dates from this year.
Okay, good. Good to know.
Any other questions on any of that? You're officially off duty, so punch a clock or whatever you do.
I'll stop on the clock for you.
Thank you for coming.
Move approval item three, second.
I appreciate you.
Roll call both.
I did, second.
Thank you.
Thank you. Jaggers?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Palmer?
Yes.
Wallstad?
Yes.
Pettit?
Yes. Item four, discussion of possible action to approve or not approve an increase in lunch prices presented by Arthur Green, Mr. Dexo.
Do you have any questions or would we?
So I added a page to your package. We didn't get it finalized until late this afternoon, so I didn't get a chance to email it out to you. But that shows the pricing for the last two times that we've approved it and then proposed.
And, you know, it's one of the things, this school, this coming school year, it's going to go back to free and reduced pay like pre-COVID. So there's going to be some, there'll be some questions from the community. I'm sure it'll, it's going to go back to where they have to turn in the applications if they're, for, to get free and reduced. So they're, the USDA trying to get everyone kind of back to how things were before. We're, we're official getting the free and reduced application and all of this. We actually needed them during the last two years. We were doing the free feeding because there was the, the stuff, the E-Rate and what's the other?
Your Title I money?
Yeah, Title I money. It's all tied. They never, they, instead of just letting you use your last year number, they still make you get. See, the Department of Ed still make you get that information, but it's hard to get applications because it was like, well, it's free. Why do I need to apply? So it's, so now we're getting back to, to normal and, and they started doing the curbside meals. I think the STEM camp starts tomorrow too, so we'll be feeding Monday through Thursday here. Then, but at the end of the month, that's the last of the waivers toward we need to curbside. So in July, they'll have to come inside to eat. The meal, the meal price, we basically, the state just said, we basically just need to pop everything at the nickel. They have this, because what the USDA has convoluted formula for everything. But basically, since we haven't charged by the last two years, we really can't base on last year's prices. They just basically said, recommended everyone raise their price at nickel. We're reducing the adult meals because we were on, the reimbursements were higher last year, but we had to charge the rates with the reimbursement. So we're, we're lowering the, the adult meal price around thirty here. About sixty-five cents because we can, just because we can. Forty cents to get a cover more on our line where it was pre-COVID. Anyone have any questions or?
I'm just curious, how many people take advantage of the curbside meals?
Well, today was the first, today was the first day they did, they had a hundred and eighty total, but I don't know how, I don't have to break down what was curbside and what was not.
But we did a hundred and eighty meals today.
So that's a pretty good, it's the first day.
That is.
Yeah.
That, um, yeah.
Thursday will hand out a meal for breakfast and lunch for Friday too, so.
Oh, that's a hundred and eighty meals. That would be breakfast and lunch?
No, uh, no, no, that, no, that was just lunches.
Just lunches, okay.
Yeah, but on, on Thursday, they'll hand out lunch, breakfast and lunch for Friday too.
They do like extra milk and cereal and things like that in the next one.
Okay.
Yeah, we were, yeah, we were very, we'd have been happy with a hundred and then they say, oh, so we definitely didn't have more than that.
Arthur, what, for someone to stop by and get a free meal like that, what do they have to show? I mean, nothing really, I mean.
Yeah, they, they've been very, the USDA's kind of given a lot of leeway the last couple of years, but all that ends June thirtieth. Where now they, for summer schools in July, like, like, it'll be open for kids and they were, in the district to come in and eat. But, like, you know, beating one under eighteen, they don't have to be enrolled in Bethany, but they had to be, they can't take them with them anymore. So they're, you know, they're really starting to just go back to the pre-COVID rules starting in July. State fiscal year, state fiscal year.
Thank you.
Move approval of item four?
Second.
Roll call both.
Jaggers?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Palmer?
Yes.
Wallstad?
Yes.
Pettit?
Yes. Item five, review of discussion of school security protocols.
So, wanted to give you a little update. I sent you an email a week or so ago with most of this. I've changed a few things. But I, I wanted to give us a chance to talk if, if we have questions or, you know, questions of the principals or me or whatever. So I'll go through all the things that in the last five years, we've, we've changed to increase our safety and security for students and staff. So we've got security vestibules in, in all the schools, including the administration building. So you can walk in the front door at the ECC or the admin building, but you can't get any further until you buzz in. So some, a, a human being has to buzz you in or over here at the, at the intersex at office. The security sign-in kiosk for every place except the admin, we don't have one there. So the ECC, the high school and then the, the elementary, middle schools, one kiosk. And so a parent has to come in and sign in. There's a couple of things that that does. When, when they use their, when they scan their state ID or driver's license, that does, and I called the guy to make sure I was saying this right. It is an immediate sex offender screening through the National Sex Offender Registry. So that, that goes in and back out really quickly. And then it also, anytime that we, Ruben or one of the principals or the secretaries have a custody situation that we want, we need to know about. Like dad can never pick daughter up or, you know, the, the only people that are available of these two, you know, this parent and this emergency contact. That can all go in there and that can be flagged and so when somebody comes in, it flags it immediately. So that person that is going to buzz them in, rather than buzz them in, they call the administrator and say, meet me down here at the intersex at office or so on. All exterior doors are locked except for that initial entry door to get into the vestibule. The security film, if you remember about six months or so last school year, we paid about thirty thousand dollars to have security film put on all of our exterior doors and windows. And so if you remember the video that I showed you, you can shoot into that or you can take your, something, try to knock it in and it just, it just cracks, but it doesn't break. And so a bullet will go through it. It's not bulletproof. Bullet will go through it and you can work at it and tear it to get it in. But when that happens, you know, it took the guy about a minute and a half on the, on the video. We, Bethany police will be here with between a minute and two minutes. Glenn will be somewhere on this, anywhere from thirty seconds to a, to a minute. So we believe that we're going to have armed people there before somebody can make entrance now. Full-time police certified SRO, you know, in the past, we had, we did our Bethany PD, we just had a different one every day and that was great. That was a great idea. That was a great start and what Dr. Schellenberger and you guys, most of you guys that were here, put that in place. The advantage to having our own SRO is this person builds relationships. They, they know the kids, the kids get comfortable with them. And, and they'll tell them things that, that they wouldn't, wouldn't tell. And so, you know, we have a huge, we have always pushed since I've been here, the importance of relationships with teachers, with TAs. With appropriate relationships, with relationships with our kids. The research is clear that when kids trust an adult, they will tell an adult if they think something's going on. They don't want to be, you know, in a, in a scary situation either. And that's exactly what happened when Dr. Flinton got in his situation eight years ago in middle school. Kid said something to, that said that somebody had a weapon, right? That was a kid telling on a kid. So that's what we want to do. We want to promote that. We've got a police car that sets out in front of one of the schools all day long and that's a deterrent. We've got an SRO that has a radio. Now, this is pretty cool. I, I'm not sure that I explained this completely because I couldn't get ahold of our SRO as he was in Florida. Plays back. And here's the deal. So he's got a radio. We didn't buy this radio. The city of Bethany Police Department gave us, or really probably loaned us in all actuality, this radio, handheld radio. He can hear the Bethany Police Department, War Acres Police Department, Oklahoma City Police Department, Putnam City Police Department, SNU Police Department and Oklahoma, Oklahoma County Sheriff's Department. Then, if he hits a button on his little magic walkie-talkie, it will cut everybody out and it will broadcast to all those, to the Bethany, I mean, to the Bethany Police Department. It will cut all the traffic out so he's not, somebody's trying to call in a traffic stop or whatever. And he says, we've got an active shooter or whatever at the high school or, you know, so, so that, and he can talk for up to twenty seconds on that and, and cut everybody else off. That's, that's powerful. You're not waiting in line. You're not having a, a problem because you're waiting in line on that deal. So I think that's, that's pretty good. And thank, thank the Bethany Police Department for their willingness to, you know. In nine eleven, if you remember, one of the big issues was that people couldn't talk, that different agencies couldn't talk to each other. The fire department couldn't talk to the police department. They had separate systems. So that's good. Our new intercom system's very clear. Whenever we have an intruder, we do four intruder lockdown drills a year for teachers and, and kids. When, before, we had to say, I don't know what you guys said, probably, this is a lockdown drill, stay put, stay silent or whatever. Now you push two buttons, right? Two buttons and it says, follow your lockdown procedures. And then it says it again in Spanish. So it's very clear. Kids know exactly what, what to do. And with the cut, push of a couple buttons, kind of takes out some of the human error, if you were kind of nervous or whatever, to know what to do or where to go or where to get your information. South elementary doors are being replaced. Right now, you see that big piece of lumber on the, the south element that came from a, the mower hit, hit actually a socket and knocked it in there. But we didn't have that, that plastic on the, on those doors because we're going to replace them because we want to have that, those.
Fob.
Yeah, fob. And those doors won't work. When we put new, the new doors in, and I'm not sure, do you know when they're coming?
I don't know when they're coming.
They're going to be half. They're, the window's just going to be this much instead of the full thing on, on that end. So, and then we're getting a new door at the, the playground also. One of the things, so I, I talked to the principals about, you know, are there anything I'm missing? And I talked to Ruben and he said, well, one thing that would be good to say, good to tell you guys is that his team, all of his teachers, his counselors, everybody. And, and we'll have to ask if you guys do anything similar, talk to the kids about making sure, they talk to them regularly about saying, never let somebody in a door who's knocking on the door. So, so somebody's knocking on this door and they know them, right? They see them. They're familiar. We don't do it. The rule is you always go get an adult. Doesn't matter who. So, so I think that's good and I think that if we're not doing that at the middle school, high school, we certainly need to, what do you guys, you, have you guys been doing that? Do you need to start doing that?
We've addressed it and then we have new signage that says it also on our doors.
And Mark's getting the same signage.
Same signage. Yeah, it's one of those things that goes against human nature. I mean, because it's just like all of us. If you see somebody outside and they're knocking on our door, human nature says, let's let them in. So we, we definitely express that message.
And then, so we added, if you remember, we added a couple of counselors. So now we're at five, we're actually at six if you count April Arthur. She's a counselor, but she, she works at the Children's Center, but we have had used her for some overflow on this side too. But we've got five school counselors and that will help us help kids with, you know, they go through stress, emotional problems, maybe even mental problems. We want to pick up on that. The quicker we pick up on those things, the, the better we can help them. So, and then the last thing I want to tell you is that Glenn is meeting, is it tomorrow that you guys? Thursday?
Thursday.
Thursday, Trey and Mark and Glenn are going to meet with heads of all the other police department, local police departments. And just kind of talk through what are we, what are we going to do if, how do we coordinate? How can we, you know, help each other? So that's a good thing. So, and now I am open for questions or these guys, if you have questions? I, I wish I could tell you and, and the people that are watching tonight that, that we're foolproof, that nothing could ever happen. It can happen anywhere. But we've put a lot of layers of security into place to make it, I feel very comfortable and, you know, we're always on high alert. The number one, my number one job is security in this district. Safety and security of teachers and, and stat, and kids, kids and teachers. The next thing is, is the culture. We want to build the kind of culture that make people want to be here and want to stay here. And I think we do those things pretty well, but we'll never be, it's like my evaluation tonight, you're never going to be perfect. You, you know, you can't be, you can't be, you're never going to arrive and say, oh, you're, you're the best, you know? So, anything for anybody?
Do we have locks inside the classrooms?
Don't the doors lock?
It seems like we have.
The doors lock, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, we.
We had an issue with that at some point.
Yeah, we did. We, we had an issue and.
Oh, really? Because we used to have. Lock from that door definitely.
We put those, those bolt locks on there and turned out we couldn't use those. So we had to take the bolt out of those. So we don't have that, but the, the door still lock. Where, I would, I would like to, I've just got to work with the current fire chief to see what he will allow us to put on because that he won't allow. And we've, I'm not, I'm not casting any blame. He's doing his job, you know? And we've, I'm not, I'm not casting any blame. He's doing his job, you know?
The challenge with that too, when you think about it, because it's built to keep people out, but those locks can also keep people in, you know, so that's, that's the half of the coin.
We do emphasize, um, during the day, um, keeping their door in a locked position, whether it's open or not. That way, if something does happen, all they have to do is shut the door and it is locked. Um, the temptation is convenient to have it unlocked, but that's a whole nother step of having to go out, check it, put your key in there. And so, we, we've emphasized this in the past. That'll be a point of emphasis next year for sure too, is make sure convenience out the window, that door stays locked, and they gotta knock on the door and someone lets them in, and that's fine, because we want that door locked. If something happens, you just shut your door. That's, and you check the hall and then check your door.
And I'll tell you, that's, that's smart. In Putnam City, we had, um, fourteen hundred certified teachers and, and more than that many doors. And our, uh, rule was you have to have it locked all the time. And principals would go, "And it's unlocked." "Oh, it's unlocked." "No, no." The thing is, they didn't do it, because kids are in and out of the, the room. So, I think what Ruben is saying of, you have the door locked, but it can be open. All you gotta do is pull it shut in an emergency. I think that is a, um, a better, um, solution, because if, if you leave that unlocked and you have to use the key to lock it, you're in trouble. That means you gotta go find your key and go put it in the lock, out in the hallway, and get it locked before something bad happens. It's not a good, not a good plan. Any other questions?
Do we know what our, what our, well, if we find out on Thursday, what our, the protocol is in our city for dealing with an active shooter? Will they wait for backup?
They will not wait for backup.
They coming in?
They're coming in.
Alright. I would think that, but I don't know that.
Glenn was, Glenn was clear, and so, I talked to the chief the very next day, Bethany Chief of Police, and he said, "No one in Bethany will wait one minute. We will be inside when we get there." And, and it won't be, we'll be there as soon as three of us get there. The, the Bethany, um, Police Department's rule is the first man goes in, and that's a good thing. Probably would've, I mean, I, I don't wanna cast aspersions, but probably would've saved lives. Anything else?
Thanks for that update.
Yeah, that's good. It's a good reminder. Definitely.
Item six, consent agenda. Had the minutes. Anybody have any updates or changes to that?
Starting on page twenty-three is the summary for the activity fund account. We are still winding down for the year, so you can see we've got a little over a hundred thousand still in outstanding encumbrances. And most of that is baseball that's going on right now, as well as, um, football and basketball gear for next year that they have to get POs in order now that won't come in till after the new fiscal year. So, those POs, we just carry over. And then page twenty-four to twenty-nine are the individual summaries for all of the accounts.
Jennifer, one quick question. On the individual summaries, the, uh, sometime back, we, we enacted the, um, the rental of our facilities. Where, where is, how's that going, first of all? And where, where's that revenue reflected?
So, it's, I would say it's going well for the gym. That's the hottest commodity that everybody wants. And I think there is, in particular, one team, we only have one team that pays. So, the rest of the teams that use it are considered the community teams that we don't charge. And so, that, he's been doing that all year. Um, he was in today to write a check and is excited about continuing to do that. Um, I think it's the iconic basketball team. So, um, they're renting the elementary cafeteria for their end-of-year banquet. And, but so far, that money's just gone into general fund, um, because we're also paying, and we're charging them as well, but we're paying whatever employee has to be here for that time. So, um, it was Roger, now it's Jamie, that they come, they unlock the doors for them. They stay the whole time. They make sure everybody's out and everything's locked up when they leave. And so, it's something that we need to talk about. We do have an auditorium activity fund. And, but so far, the auditorium's only been used one time since we've started it. So, um, the big money has gone to the, the general fund from the gym, yeah.
And, you know, we have to pay electricity and, and the heat and air on all of that whenever they're there for the whatever hours. It's, you know, it's quite a bit. Not saying that we, if we, if you guys say, "Hey, we need to do something different with that."
And we don't do anything with our, like, ball fields or soccer or anything like that? Nobody else?
You know, if, if somebody is, um, the community team thing that, that she was talking about, so we have a member of the school that are, that is coming in and being part of that, then we don't charge them. We wanna, we want them to be part, sorta like using our, uh, storm shelter, you know? We want people to come in, um, but, um, we don't, we have, I don't, I can't think of any, um, use. Did we get money from the, um, auditorium?
Just that one day. They, uh, dance company used it for a recital. It was one evening. So, it was just a couple of hours.
And I've been, to be honest with you, I've been a little reluctant to, uh, rent our, uh, auditorium out, because it's hard to find, to look at every seat, every square inch of carpet for, um, spills and gum and all the different things that can go on. And we've got a really nice facility, and I, you know, I just, I just, I hate to, to get it messed up.
Agreed.
We do have a group using the auditorium this week for orchestra. I think it's OKC Streams, if I'm remembering correctly. And, but we even, Drew and I talked, cause she had used it before at no charge. And so, um, we cut them a big deal on the rate, so that they could use it, but still cover the expenses.
And to use the auditorium, you have to open up a larger area, because the commons area.
And you've gotta have somebody that can run the sound and the lights and the, all the things in there as well.
Should we have an activity fund for that, so it's not going into the general fund, or it was just set up separately?
So, the auditorium has one, um, that we could potentially put those funds in. We set that up when they redid the auditorium. It just hasn't ever generated a lot of activity. Um, but as far as, you know, the money from the gym rental, I think we would just have to decide where that goes. If it's gonna go into an activity fund, who, who benefits from that?
Thank you.
Okay, on page thirty, starts the general fund re- revenue. And at the top, the district, and I'll just kinda go through all of them, since we're getting really close to the end of the year. Uh, taxes are up thirty-four thousand dollars. Interest is down seventy-four hundred. The next three together, reimbursement, other local and general fund refund, we're down seventy-nine thousand. And again, that is because of the bus grant we had last year that we don't have this year. Uh, child nutrition is up seventy-six hundred, and so, total district is down forty-four thousand four eighty-three. Intermediate county four mil is up a hundred and fifty-two thousand. Mortgage tax is up forty thousand. And so, total intermediate is up a hundred and ninety-three thousand. State gross production is up twelve thousand nine hundred. Motor vehicle is up a hundred and thirty-five thousand. School land is up six thousand ninety-five. Vehicle stamp is up nine hundred. Foundation and incentive is up six hundred and forty thousand eight fifty-six. Flexible benefit is up sixteen thousand seven eighty. Alt ed is down fifty-six hundred and sixty-five dollars. National board is down ten thousand. Reading sufficiency is up twenty-one hundred. Textbooks is up seventy thousand four sixty. ACE technology is up five thousand. Child nutrition is up eleven hundred and seventy-one dollars. And then, family and consumer sciences is the same. So, total state is up eight hundred and seventy-five thousand nine eighty-one. Questions about any of those? Okay. Page thirty-one is the federal collections. And the top two haven't changed, but in comparison to last year at this time, um, Indianette is up the thirty-four thousand two eighty-one seventy-two. And the next, the forty-two hundred federal is up a hundred and seventy thousand six forty-three. So, that's the money we brought in, in July of this fiscal year. And MEECHF is down twenty-three thousand, and that's just based on their claim paying timing. Um, child nutrition is up a hundred and twenty-four thousand four ninety-six. And then, school counselor corps is up the thirty-two thousand one thirty-two eighty, because we didn't have that last year. So, total federal is up three hundred and thirty-eight thousand two sixty-one. And I will say the child nutrition federal, um, will be down next year, just because we are moving out of that. Everyone eats free. So, just to think about that in the next couple of months. Um, so, grand total revenue, we are at one point three six two million from last year. Questions over any of the federal? Okay. Page thirty-two starts the encumbrances for board approval.
Short list.
Yes. Um, questions about any of those?
Just that clarification on the, the fence. That's to redo the fence or modify it for softball and baseball?
Eight oh eight.
Yeah, eight oh eight.
Um, yes, so that is the actual metal outfield fences for both of them to get redone.
Okay.
Yeah, and netting was last month. Alright.
Did we keep the softball fence where it was, or did we move it any or? You know, there had been some discussion about adjusting it. Was it staying where?
I don't know the answer to that.
What are you making up, Anthony?
I don't think I'm making anything up. There was-
Hey, why don't you guys text Joe and ask him?
I don't, it might be-
Lisa's actually in the workroom. I think she's, she said, "Text her if there's anything about athletics."
If it was moved, it's, it could've only been left field. Right field is up against the track. And so, until, unless the track gets changed at some point, that the right field cannot change.
I do know, um, the airifying and top dress and all the dirt work that they're doing is realigning the middle section, because it's out of compliance. So, I don't know if that has anything to do with the fence line as well.
Basketball uniforms, um, those are, when's the last time we bought basketball? Do we do this every year?
No, we, I, I don't remember buying basketball uniforms. They, so, it may be five years. I don't, I'm not saying that we haven't in the last five. Lisa, she probably wouldn't know. Do you know if we've purchased, um, basketball uniforms? I don't think we bought them in five years.
It's been a while.
I think that's true.
Is this high school and middle school?
Uh, these are just high school.
Just high school, okay.
They were asking about the softball fence, if that was being moved at all, the metal fencing?
Possibly, because it's not very even where it's at. So, that's another thing.
So, in and out?
Well, it's like two hundred is some part, and it's two fifteen in a part, but it's not like, most peoples are two hundred on the edge and they go two fifteen in the middle, and ours shows in and out, so. And I think they just measured it where they were, so I don't know. We might have to talk to, I'd have to talk to them to make sure of it.
So, sh- for the record, she doesn't know either.
Well, we did talk about it, but I guess the quotes weren't really original, so.
Thank you. I didn't know. I was, I was stumped.
Any other questions?
The, the weight room equipment, is that replacing or adding or a combination?
It's a combination. So, um, there are some of those big forty-five that are rubber, if you've ever been in there, that, that they use for things other than just put on the, on the bars. And then, there are some that are bars that are just getting, some that go on the bars that are just getting old and cracked and broken, and it's just a safety thing. So, you know, we haven't done that, to my memory, since I've been here. We haven't put a, and Coach, um, uh, Marchino kinda takes, uh, takes that under his, um, as his, that, you know, he was the one that wanted to have those floors redone. It looks fantastic, if you haven't been in there. But, um, one of the ways that we'll keep that floor nice is by having those kind of, uh, uh, weights in there. So, uh, he came and talked to me, and, uh, Dr. Flinton, um, had, has proposal ready, and, um, we gave him what he wanted.
Okay. Page thirty-four is the function summary for the general fund. We are currently, um, are spent and encumbered are eighty-nine point three percent of our appropriated amount. Last year at this time, it was eighty-six point five percent, so we're up two point eight percent. Um, but considering the gym and all the things from this year and what we've put into athletics, I think we're doing pretty good.
Three percent, think about that. We're only three percent above where we were last year, but we've put in all those offices and we've done all that work out there. We have put a lot of money into athletics this year, which it needed. Since I've been here, we have not put, I mean, we've just kinda band-aided it, but, um, that's not bad. We're, we're in pretty good shape.
Page thirty-five is the function summary for building fund. Um, the appropriated amount is still just the estimate of needs plus the red bud funds. Uh, we have paid lingo some, but the balance is the same. Page thirty-six is the function summary for the bond fund, and again, it's the same as last month. No change on the balance. Page thirty-seven is the function summary for the sinking fund. We deposited two thousand two hundred and seventy-five dollars in taxes this month, and so, that is the difference in the balance from last month. And then, page thirty-eight is, um, a fundraiser request for a track to do a silent auction. Questions about any of that?
What are we auctioning off of the silent auction?
Some custom relay batons to raise money for all-state jackets and rings and things like that. It's a good problem to have.
That's awesome.
Great.
Okay.
Where's the, where's the track? Who's up here? Track is, um, you know, those curves? Nothing. Excuse your month. Never mind.
Okay, page thirty-nine. And so, this is just the request to adjust our estimate of needs amount in the building fund to add in the red fun, red bud funds, so that our appropriated amount is actually what we brought in this year and we're able to spend those funds. Questions about that?
You remember the red bud funds, right? Everybody, yeah, good.
Page forty is just our application for approval of temporary appropriation to start next fiscal year. Um, and so, you can see, uh, our auditor has set the general fund expenses at sixteen million and the building fund at a hundred and fifty thousand. And then, that will all get adjusted when they come out and do the estimate of needs in July.
Have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Move approve item number six.
Second?
Roll call then.
Jaggers?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Palmer?
Yes.
Wallstaff?
Yes.
Cuddet?
Yes. Item seven, staff reports.
Ruben, you had to be ha- happy with those, uh, overall yell and math scores?
Yeah, good. I mean, the, uh, foundations, uh, hegarty, uh, addition this year, we've got great feedback on that. We've seen good results with that. Um, the third grade RSA stuff is pretty phenomenal. Um, so, yeah, good, good stuff.
And these benchmarks are based on what, the star then?
Yeah. Some, some lit first stuff as well, some other stuff that we do for some younger kids, but mostly star.
I tell you, you can't understate that re-insufficiency part that he put on there. Hundred percent of our kids, they have a way to the next grade. I've never seen that before. Not even here. We've always had one or two or, you know?
We've had some that had to go to, like, summer reading camp, and then they, you know, get that little boost and they take another assessment. We've had some that had to go to like summer reading camp and then they, you know, get that little boost and they take another assessment. So, so we had some get to that point and then we've had zero at the end of that, we've never had a hundred percent. And this was actually even before the alternative assessment, so we give them, if they don't make it through STAR or through state testing, we give them ITBS. That's another thing, then they go to summer reading camp, then they take the STAR again. So before ITBS, before summer reading camp, before another STAR, a hundred percent, it was, we've never had that since, since I've been here and I don't think before that, so. Pretty, pretty phenomenal coming off of, come a year we've had with those kids, so.
Congratulations, it's fantastic, great.
Our great teachers, you know, worked really hard this year and then, you know, the, the teams leading up, you know, really been committed, second grade leading, feeding them into it. I mean, they've really been committed to working together to overcome, overcome those, uh.
Gaps.
Gaps for those kids, yeah.
I would just say with the middle school and the high school, uh, reports, it's great to see so many, uh, to, to visualize and see it on paper, all of the awards, uh, that the arts have won this year. I mean, our, obviously our track team did fantastic, but the arts, uh, that's, that's awesome.
Choir, everything.
Yeah, the awards assembly, uh, for middle school win, very smooth for as many kids and as many things as you had to say, uh, it was good. So all these, uh, state championship and new, uh, uh, school records, we're having to update a lot of boards and things up there.
It's a nice problem.
And Dr. Flinton, I would say on the professional development piece that you, you've noted out here, talking about supporting that whole child and how, how important that is. I mean, we're, obviously with what we've dealt with for the last two years and that's gonna become more and more important. And I think the six counselors identifying all of, you know, being able to identify these things, so, that's awesome.
Okay, item eight, just, uh, are we, did we get that?
We did not, so we did table it.
Okay, so what, tabling item eight. Uh, item nine, discussion possible action to approve or not approve the following renewals, contracts and agreements for fiscal year twenty-three. Cooperative council for Oklahoma school administration to participate in the Costa district level series program in the amount of two thousand. B, Dream Box Formally Reading Plus, master software and services agreement for the high school and middle school in the amount of twenty-one thousand one hundred and fifty. C, Imagine Learning Formally S- Edge Annuity Digital Library Subscription Use for Credit Recovery in the amount of seven thousand two hundred and fifty. D, Nikki Kick, educational consultant amount of seventy dollars per hour. E, No Ready High School Site License and Training in the amount of nine thousand four hundred. F, Oklahoma State Department of Health Meechew Program. G, Putnam and Company P L L C Contract for Audit of Public Schools for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year. H, Amendment with Sedexo Management to manage and operate districts food service operation. I, the Center for Educational Law P C Basic Legal Services Program. J, Volunteer Coaching Contract with Brittany Hughesman for high school cheer. Pages fifty-one, seventy-three.
And I do have one correction on E, the No Ready is, also includes the middle school. They did not have that written on the contract, but we did get a.
Just in grade.
Okay, but we did get an amended one that to, to be signed tonight that includes the middle school.
And Dream Box is the one we're, we're expanding into the, into the high school, is that right, into the secondary? Do you know if that, with, with that expansion piece taking place, I noticed on like Edge Annuity, there's a, there's a line item for PD. Does that include professional development for you, since we're expanding into, so they have an understanding how to use it, no?
I think that's in there, I know it's in the No Ready one. So the middle school received, um, PD before last year on the, on the Reading Plus, where they had a trainer come out with our special education teachers and our, um, and our English teachers. And then we, I know when we contacted them originally, uh, they were gonna do some PD for them, but we all, we also have the ability for our teachers to help the high school look at their data and stuff. Cause we're, like he's done benchmarking, we've done our benchmarking too for that, cause if you'll remember, my SMART roles were that every student would have a year's growth or pass the, um, O E T, or O E T. But the scores at, uh, state testing, and so we have data from that stuff too, and so we, we can tr- help train some of the, the English teachers.
Like a train the trainer, tie the marker or something?
Exactly, but I think it was included in that, or we've talked to them about that, I don't know if it's in there.
It, it's not on this actual agreement.
So I can do some more checks on that as well.
Thanks.
But we do have a year under our belt, so we can, we can help out.
Great.
Move approval item nine, A through J?
Second. Do we need to modify E to include middle school or secondary?
Yeah.
Eighth grade only.
Eighth grade only.
Oh, is that eighth grade?
Jaggers?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Palmer?
Yes.
Wallstad?
Yes.
Pettit?
Yes. Item ten, discussion possible action to approve or not approve the following out-of-town, out-of-state overnight trips as submitted. A, Zach Colson to attend the Heartland Distance Running Summit in Overland Park, Kansas, June twenty-ninth through July second, with the expenses to be paid from the Cross Country Activity Fund. B, High School Choir to attend an overnight show choir camp at Sawyer Lake in Minko, Oklahoma, July twenty-first through twenty-third, with the expenses to be paid from the Choir Activity Fund. C, Volleyball Program to attend an overnight volleyball tournament in Vertigree, Oklahoma, on August twelfth through thirteenth, with expenses to pay from the Volleyball Activity Fund.
Move approval item ten?
Second.
Ro Calvin.
Jaggers?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Palmer?
Yes.
Wallstad?
Yes.
Pettit?
Yes. Item eleven, discussion possible action to approve or not approve the following summer athletic events activities with the use of school transportation. A, Boys Basketball to host an elementary basketball camp on June sixth through seventh in the high school gym for elementary students. B, Football to host an elementary football camp July eleventh through twelfth at the Athletic Comp- Plex for first through sixth graders.
This, okay, uh, the basketball program would like to host an elementary football camp, is that just a?
Elementary, a taco on football two or?
On which one?
Eleven.
On eleven.
Boys Basketball to host an elementary basketball?
Sorry, just on this board recommendation, I guess.
Oh, it's on the recommendation?
Yeah, it's not written in the agenda, but.
Now, would this be the first football, we haven't done a football camp in the past, that was, what's?
It's been awhile, yeah, but it's been several years, but I mean, probably like seven, eight years. Good to do it again.
Move approve item number twelve?
Second.
Wait.
I'm sorry, item eleven, sorry.
Second on the left.
Ro Calvin.
Jaggers?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Palmer?
Yes.
Wallstad?
Yes.
Pettit?
Yes, item twelve, discussion possible action to approve or not approve the number of transfer students the district has the capacity to accept in each grade at each school site as presented.
So these are basically just cleaning up our numbers for what we have. We, we went a couple numbers on the secondary six through twelve, we, we went a couple numbers below what we have so that we don't have to, to refill if we lose somebody. Um, you know, we don't have to fill every single time, but, um, so we, we're probably running around one twenty-one, twenty-one on those one-eighteens. And then, um, one thirty-six and above, like three or so, that's what, that was the recommendation from these guys and, um, it's like it'll work pretty well.
I wanna clarify something here though, this looks like on seventy-seven, this is the total capacity for each grade, but the agenda says the number of transfer students. So it almost looks like we could accept a hundred and thirty-nine transfer students for the sophomore class, does that make sense? Am I?
Yeah, it, it does make sense.
Am I missing something?
It should, it should be transferred capacity, or not transferred, it should just be school capacity. We have to set this for the transfer law.
Right.
The law requires us to set it, so if we wanna clean that up in the, in the, uh.
Agenda?
Yeah, well, just in the motion.
In the motion, but.
Yeah, we need to, we need to clarify that, cause I don't think we need to accept a hundred and thirty-nine transfers in the sophomore class.
It's gonna be crowded here at the high school.
That would be a, yeah. Just helping out, Mark. I just wanna get on record. Uh, move approval item twelve, amending the language to say that, um, you know, say.
To say that the.
The number of capa- the capacity as presented on page seventy-seven.
Yeah.
There we go.
Second.
Ro Calvin.
Jaggers?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Palmer?
Yes.
Wallstad?
Yes.
Pettit?
Yes, thirteen, discussion of possible action to approve or not approve, modification of Dr. Matthew Flinton's title from Chief Operations Officer, COO, to Assistant Superintendent.
Questions? I mean, Dr. Flinton's done an amazing job, um, as I told you guys in some correspondence before, um, when we made that a COO job, there were different, two different people, two different situations. I talked to Jennifer, she's, I mean, this should be a CFO, Chief Financial Officer, and that should be, um, a, an assistant soup. And I'll tell you the things that where it, it becomes the most important, when I'm not in the district, if I'm not in the building, if I'm not around, we need it to be clear who is the person to go see, the second in command, the person. And so having somebody that has the title of Assistant Superintendent is, um, that person.
Move approval item thirteen?
Second.
Thirteen's fourteen.
Fourteen, sorry, not thirteen.
No, thirteen, I'd already marked it off, sorry, I was dumb. Did you say? Ro Calvin, sorry, good.
Jaggers?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Palmer?
Yes.
Wallstad?
Yes.
Pettit?
Yes, because I was reading chief, all of this down in fourteens. Follow on, discussion possible action to approve or not approve any reference to Chief Operations Officer be replaced by Assistant Superintendent in all board policies.
Move approve item fourteen.
Second.
Ro Calvin.
Jaggers?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Palmer?
Yes.
Wallstad?
Yes.
Pettit?
Yes, motion for executive session.
Second.
Who moved?
I gotta have a motion.
Any second, Ro Calvin.
Jaggers?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Palmer?
Yes.
Wallstad?
Yes.
Pettit?
Yes. Yes.
Concession only the members of the board, the superintendent were present. Only items discussed were those listed on the agenda and no votes were taken. We have a motion for item 15A through R. We do need to extend the superintendent's contract for another year at this time too. So we need to add that to our...
Oh, sorry. So moved. Second.
Low call votes.
Sagerz?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Palmer?
Yes.
Blasstad?
Yes.
Pettit?
Yes. Informational items.
Financial Board meeting on the 30th, which is a little odd. What day is that? What day of the week is it?
Thursday, I think.
Thursday, so you know it's not a Monday.
Yes, Thursday.
But that's instead of the July meeting and that just, we shut everything down. We open everything back up. We get all those new POs ready to go. And then the OSSBA conference that we all go to is August 25th through 28th. So hopefully you'll put that on your calendar. We will pay for everybody to go. We'll sign you up and everything. And then that's that.
I just want to thank all the administrators that are here. Yes, for a great year. I mean, you know, we're coming out of COVID and it was, we were still in a weird time at the beginning of the school year, but you know, we kept kids in school. And we've seen improvements in test scores even during, you know, during this transition time back to what I consider normal school. So I just want to thank all of you.
Thank you, Dr. Flynn.
Well, congratulations. You're now, you know, assistant superintendent.
But I just feel so excited about how things are. I feel that there's a lot of great things ahead. I feel good about our coaching and I feel good about the facilities and everything just seems very positive. So, thank you.
And welcome, I guess, to our new board class. We did. We just started.
That's why we're here.
You're in that big one right there.
It was a long discussion.
Yeah, I don't read that. I don't read executive session.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Superintendent's report.
All administrators will be attending the COSA new law conference tomorrow afternoon and then the COSA conference the rest of the week. Jennifer will be there in the morning for some federal program stuff. I'll be presenting at the COSA conference Tuesday and Wednesday. On Wednesday, I'll be co-presenting with Dr. Melanie Howe from, where is she?
Newcastle.
Newcastle. On Live Well, Lead Well. And on Thursday is Classroom Management. Crews are painting the halls and classrooms throughout the district, just giving them a fresh coat of paint. A little update on the gym offices there. The flooring has been complete. The crews will finalize the painting and start working on the punch list this week. The mill work for the offices won't be in until the 21st of June. We will likely have the offices ready to occupy on the 10th of June minus the mill work. Softball concessions, flooring and mill work are both complete. The window for the press box, so we're gonna, so I don't know about that wide up there. You can't really see, so we have a play-by-play and a, you notice two guys sitting there or a gal or whatever. And it's hard to just see out. So we're going to put a third window, so it's going to be nice and wide up there, but that window isn't in, but we think it's going to be in and be installed. See, the window should arrive this week and will be installed next week. After the window's installed, crews will do the final interior and exterior painting. And if you haven't been out there to see what it looks like, it's pretty, it's pretty impressive. You know, we've got a lot of concrete on the, on the ground for where we were walking on the grass before and we're not walking up a spiral staircase.
Yes, that's good.
That's my report.
And we're adjourned.